Before we start, I'd like to introduce, if they may, just raise your hands. Our Chief of the Department, Scott C. Clark. Thank you. You may applaud. Our First Assistant Chief, Kyle J. Bolz. Thank you. Second Assistant Chief, Chad S. Mott. Thank you. And our Third Assistant Chief, Frederick V. Sanders Jr. Thank you. Appreciate your attendance at this meeting. And subsequently, not this month, because this is the meeting they'll attend, they'll be at the second meeting of each month. That makes it a little easier for them with their meetings for the departments being held Monday, Tuesday, the first Monday, Tuesday of the month. Now, of course, if you can, we can have them to read the public hearing. We'll be able to like you.
Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Hopps?
Here.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Here.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Notice of public hearing. Please take notice that pursuant to Article 4 of Village Law and deprimations of the law in the state of New York, public hearing will be held in Village Hall, 9924, Hempstead, New York, on Tuesday, May 7, 2019, at 6:15 p.m., to consider entering into an agreement with Hempstead Village Fire Department to provide fire protection and emergency services for the corporate village of Hempstead. The proposal agreement is to file in the office of the Village Clerk, Village Hall, 99 James Garnerway, Hempstead, New York, or the same agency as the building office hours. All persons interested shall have an opportunity to be heard as a proposal at the time and place of onset by order of the board trustees of the corporate village of Hempstead, known by Mayor, Patricia Perez, Village Clerk. Take it away.
Thank you. So we're here to consider entering into an agreement with the village of Hempstead's volunteer fire department to provide fire protection and emergency services for the corporate village of Hempstead. There is on the forms that we have available to us, an agreement. There are five paragraphs, and the trustees all see that?
Yes.
And it's important, I think, maybe perhaps if we can read that so the questions could contain some of the things that perhaps we'll answer now. Perhaps we can all just do a paragraph of each, if you're willing. Trustee, can you start?
Oh, it'd be easy, just let the attorney do it, like all the clerk.
You don't want to show off your reading talent, so. All right, no problem.
Want to read it?
Please.
Okay. So, a agreement made this day of 2019 by and between the corporate village of Hempstead, a municipal corporation maintaining its principal offices in 9924, Hempstead, New York, hereafter referred to as the village, and the Hempstead Village Fire Department, a membership corporation maintaining its principal offices in 75 Main Street, Hempstead, New York, hereafter referred to as the Fire Department. Now therefore, the parties to hear by agree as follows. The Fire Department agrees to furnish fire protection and emergency services in case of accidents, calamities, and other emergencies in connection with which the services of firemen, including rescue squad, will be required on a 24-hour per day, seven-day-per-week basis within the entire geographic limits and boundaries of the corporate village of Hempstead for the period June 1st, 2019 through May 31st, 2020. In consideration for the performance of the services the village agrees to pay, the Fire Department is to sum $196,000 and to supply and maintain and keep in proper repair upon notice of the need therefore adequate and suitable apparatus and equipment as the village shall determine for the use by the Fire Department and the furnishing of such fire protection within the village. It is understood and agreed that all purchases made by the Fire Department shall be in accordance with applicable laws of the state of New York, and the Fire Department thus hereby expressly are weak to be bound by and to comply with all such laws pertaining not only to purchases but as to any aspect of these operations. The Fire Department agrees to submit and write into the Village Clerk quartering reports on the first days of September, December, March, and June commenced in September 1st, 2019, indicating a complete record of all the expenditures, purchases, and the present status of any bank balances pertaining to the consideration paid by the village here after. As further consideration for the payment by the village, the Fire Department agrees to keep all apparatus and equipment supplied to and by the village in a clean and orderly condition. However, it is understood that title to all equipment, apparatus, et cetera, present investment in the village and to all such equipment, apparatus, et cetera, purchased by the Fire Department hereafter shall be best in the village.
Okay, thank you. Trustees, do you have any comments before we open the mic? Okay, then the mic's available to the residents. If there's any questions or comments they'd like to make. May I ask the Chief how many members do we have for the volunteer fire department?
We're currently at 207. We just want a 46-year member yesterday, Mike Harman, volunteer number three. That'll also be reported to our community.
Okay, thank you.
So we're running at 200 now.
200 and.
200.
200. And we would encourage you, for as best we can, the idea of a junior fire department, to successfully other communities and might help us boost the number of people that we have moving forward. I think they would start, is that a date 14 and then 18 they're allowed to join us? Those are none structured? That's quite good, thank you. All right, I'm sorry I interrupted. Ms. Brayley, the mic is yours.
I just had a few questions with regards to policy and procedures.
Ms. Brayley, can you just put your name on the back for the hearing?
Yes. My name is Shelley Brayley, E.R.A.Z.L.E.Y. My address is 870 Manhattan Avenue, Hempstead. I just wanted to ask with regards to rules, regulations, like when you have a hearing like this, I would imagine it's all related to the contract. So with the rules and regulations, rules and regulations for fire departments specifically, last year I had a photograph of one of the vehicles on the New Jersey Turnpike. When you go over this contract, are we looking at that? Are we seeing where the cars are? Who's driving them? Who's responsible for the maintenance on those vehicles? Who's responsible for the repairs? The gas, is it the residents? And how far can those vehicles be driven outside of this community? And for what purposes? Are those kinds of things covered in this statement?
There is an understanding that they allow these vehicles to go to any fire department function where they represent the village. In terms of the gases provided by the village or the vehicles of the youth by the chiefs, and I believe the chavler, I'm not sure how many other people in the fire department have vehicles, but four chiefs and chavler, I have other people.
So the vehicles will, we see stuff like that, they're doing business for the village?
That's my understanding.
When, I'm sorry, when you see stuff like?
Like the photograph of one of the more of the time. So someone sent me a photograph of one of the fire cars, trucks, on the turnpike getting off at the Great Adventure exit. And so when I asked about it, I couldn't really get a clear answer. So I'm just, I'm just wondering.
So as the mayor stated, although this is a volunteer fire department, and we're volunteering our time, we require so many hours of training. Every year we have to get a medical to be certified to be a Class A firefighter. And that includes going to conferences so that we can better understand ways to not only protect our village as firefighters, a new equipment that comes out, new fire suppression that comes out, so we go to conferences. I myself have attended a conference in Baltimore, Maryland, but it was for the fire department, yes.
So if stuff like that happens, so that it's not confusing to the people that live here, it would be nice if you guys would know that, because when I got up to ask the question, nobody seemed to know, and nobody could really answer the question. So it would be nice if leadership knows about it, so when the community is asking, you know, there's no confusion.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have one other. Residency, is there any residency requirements for the fire department? What percentage of the firemen actually live in the village? What percentage, you know, and what is the range? If they don't live here, if they live in Baldwin, well, that's close enough. But does anybody live in Suffolk County? And you already asked the question about the young people and the junior firefighters, that was my other.
As far as the junior firefighters, I'm on that committee for junior firefighters. Of course, you have to make sure you thoroughly have the safety of the young people involved. You have to make sure that you have the right people that's going to be dealing with young people. You know, you don't want anybody in the fire department, we don't want anybody that has a criminal record or been arrested as a pedophile, so we want to make sure that we have the right people dealing with our young people. And then, what, I'm sorry, what was the other question?
Residents.
Residency. So when you join the fire department as a resident of Village of Hempstead, there are people that join the fire department, live in Hempstead, and then they might purchase a house somewhere else. As long as it's within the vicinity of the village of Hempstead, all of our surrounding neighborhoods, yes, you can be still a member of the fire department. We want Hempstead residents first, of course, but to be honest, recruitment is difficult because we have a lot of people, again, this is a volunteer organization, that you're asking people to volunteer to go into burning buildings and not get paid and could risk their life. We don't have too many people knocking on the door.
Keep in mind that.
But the junior firefighters would be a viable option if they were open to the young people?
Well, that's what we're doing. Again, I'm on that committee, and so we're putting that together, but again, there's paperwork we have to have in place, you have to have bylaws in place, we have to make sure that the, our fire council approves the bylaws that we have here for our junior. So it's a procedure that you have to go through. And like I said, I am the chair of that committee, and so we want to see our young people a part of our fire department.
Well, if there's information in the community, I'm sure there are people like myself that would volunteer to help you build out whatever you need to build out. We just need the information so that we can build capacity with the young people in this community.
Absolutely, and I'll make sure you get the information. And another thing is funding, so we, you know, we are, I was soliciting different organizations or people that's willing to donate because we don't want to charge the young people. We want them to have uniforms and things like that. And then there's only so much that they can do, so we have to consider that. It's not like they're going to be riding on fire trucks and putting out fires.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other questions you'd ask at this time? Keep in mind, please, the questions about tonight's meeting, adopted items. Is the form in the bag available? And we'll ask those questions prior to the vote on whatever the agenda item is that you referenced.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak on the fire department?
Absolutely. So, I'm from Mayor James Garner. On James Garnerway.
Good evening, aboard, may I ask, Mayor, all trustees. Let me say, there is no better fire department in the Seventh Battalion better than Hempstead Fire Department. There is none. And I say that because I never forget those six young kids that burned up over on Hyde Street over there. I never forget that. The community came together, and in fact, those Hempstead people couldn't pay these fire department people enough money. These men and women put their lives on the line. I've been with them. I've been with them for 16 long, no, 20 long years I've been with them. And they do an extraordinary good job here in the village of Hempstead, saving lives and property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make a comment? All right, hearing none. We can move to the motion phase of this item. No. We close hearings and then people.
Next meeting.
All right, I'm all, thank you. You're right.
So can I have more?
Yeah, you're right.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hopps?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
I thank you, Miss. And go ahead.
Trustee second. Trustee Hopps.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we start, let me take this opportunity to introduce the gentleman who's standing in front of us. This is Joseph N. Gill. He is our new treasurer.
Evening, everybody.
He comes to us from Great Neck. He was not only the treasurer, he uses the village clerk as well, and we welcome you on board.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll get it.
We'll entertain the chief's reports, and the chief can get back to the mayor's house and do his duty.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Ryan, trustees and village residents. My report for April 2019 is as follows. General alarms, we had 74, of which one was a working fire on Linden Avenue. We had 31 stellar alarms, 16 rescue calls, three requests to mutilate for general alarm house fires outside of the village. We had, unfortunately, those alarms, we had one firefighter aided, totaling 126 alarms for the month of April, and for the year, we have 573. In addition, we have five fire prevention presentations, of which four were to schoolchildren, one was to adults, and last but not least, like I mentioned earlier, unfortunately, we had a 46-year member passed yesterday, Mike Harman from Hollis Street. Our membership is currently at 200. Respectfully submitted, Scott Clark.
I'm sorry to hear the loss.
Thank you, thank you.
Any questions for fire chiefs before they leave? All right, there's two other questions that are excellent, but they are actually questions to be asked at the ultimate, and we have three that pertain to items that are on the agenda. Renee, would you come up? Thank you, Chief. Renee, Bethany?
I thought he said Renee. Oh, I thought you said Renee, I'm sorry.
This is Renee. My name is just pronounced Ren.
And.
And you're Ren.
It always messes people up. Yeah, I just wanted to know what on item, item 14, abolishing the position and title of village administrator, and then, items 15 to 17, approving the appointments of a position, is sort of confusing language, but what is that exactly that's happening? What, the village administrator, that position is being abolished?
If the motion passes, that would be the case.
If the motion passes, okay. And so, well, it's kind of vague. What was the administrator, and why is it being abolished? I mean, it's okay if, I'm sure it's going to be searched and all that, but I just wonder what it was exactly, and what are the positions that are? When you see the appointments of a position, I guess there are several positions for which you want to approve appointments? Is this not very clear?
Yes.
So who is the village administrator? I mean, we definitely know that, whose position and title is being abolished, is that person being reappointed to a different position?
The individual that you referenced has resigned.
Oh.
Now, in terms of the position being abolished, if it passes, the theory was economy and efficiency. Village administrator, there are two types. Icom explains the debate, and on page 15 in the handbook, they explain one type was the village administrator who usurped the authority of the mayor. They reference Card City and Long Regis, two examples. Another type of village administrator, we happen to have too many of them. A man, I think it's the last one, because this one basically does other assignments. We use an in-house description of chief's staff.
So those functions can be fulfilled without having that position there, like in a mayor's? Whatever that person did can be fulfilled with which, who you've already got?
There, we reflect in the book. Now, you asked questions about item 15?
No, 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 items 15 to 17, there, the authorization by the board to approve the appointments of the position within the incorporated village of Hempstead. Am I making sense? It's on there.
Yeah, so on page 15, is that the one you're talking about?
No.
Oh, your page number's different than mine. 15, 16, and 17.
I just got one page.
Okay, thank you. On page 15, position of sanitation laborer part-time. We have resignation, and we are filling that opening. Page, on my page 16, there is a position for neighborhood aid. We're trying to add some community members sometimes for the Brownies.
Oh, right, yes.
So we could add coverage in the evening and weekends.
Okay, yeah.
Item 17 is a department of public works, labor, and the parks, often part-time. We had an employee terminated, and on that page, it replaces an individual who would replace that person if approved by the board. And finally, on my page 18, yours is different, and there is a position of labor part-time sanitation and replaces another individual who also has resigned, and is a new hire.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify this one.
Thank you, Ren. Thank you. Angel Sosa?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Ryan. Angel Sosa, I'm a member of the organizing committee for the Salvadoran Day Festival. Daniel, Mr. Renfro, Mr. Hopps, welcome. Shepelle Johnson, and of course, Ms. Baderhold. Nice to see you again. As you know, I'm a member of the organizing committee, the organization that's called Empresas Veracambio. We are a nonprofit organization that for the past 13 years has been organizing this festival, which is a static festival, it's not a parade, I just want to make that clear because of some sort of confusion with that. This is an event that brings together all parts of the community. We have been bringing this to the great village of Hempstead, to this great melting pot that we have here that has welcomed everyone, especially the Salvadoran community, and we would like to continue doing so. And item number 12 on the agenda today, it's the application for our event, which was submitted prior to the resolution that was passed on April 2nd. We submitted such application on the good faith that the prior prices or the prior cost of the permit would have applied, so we're hoping that the rest of, that the board members and Mayor Ryan could see their way and approve such resolution and allow us to continue with this great event. As you know, the Salvadoran community has been a great asset to Hempstead Village. All of you have been at the event. I'm not sure if you have been there, Mr. Hopps, I know the rest of the board has been at the event. As a matter of fact, ex-Mayor Garner has also been to a Salwar, if I'm not mistaken. He's also been with us in the past. So we're hoping that we can persuade you or guide towards the decision of allowing, because, by the way, it's not only us. I'm speaking on behalf of the Salvadoran event that takes place on August 4th, the first Sunday in August, but there's, my understanding is that there's other events in our organization that had already also submitted their permit applications for their events. So happens that our event is the first one that would be strongly affected by this change. We're just hoping that you can see your way and vote on a yes in this resolution and allowing us to continue holding this event in this very village of Hempstead. As also, you know, as a show of support, we have Mr. Miguel Alice Aviano, who's the Salvadoran consulate, been representative of the Salvadoran government, is here to show his support on behalf of this event, so I'm hoping that you can see our way to assist us in this matter. Thank you so much for allowing me.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Sure.
When you applied for this event?
Right.
Were you told that you were going to be, they were going to be charging the old price for, did they inform you that the village would be considering a resolution on how we deal with the rates moving forward? Were you told that they were going to charge you the old price, or you were informed that the village was looking at revising how we do these events?
By the time you submitted the application, I believe there was talk about a resolution. We were not quoted an actual price from last year.
No, I didn't actually quote the price. I'm asking you, when you told that, when you submitted the application, that the village will be revisiting how we charge for these?
I was told that they were looking into it.
Okay, that's all you knew.
Yeah, I mean, but it wasn't a decisive, it wasn't a natural decision at the time, from what I understood. But like I said, you know, we submitted on the good faith that we were going to continue with the same basis of before. You know, it's been, this will be number 13. And you know, as a nonprofit organization, unfortunately, we don't have the kind of sponsors that would allow us to pay the new rates, and that's, you know.
But you answered my question.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
I just want to comment as well, since this might be the time to do it. My concern is on April 2nd, 2019, we did, by five minutes, both changed the resolution to reflect some higher prices so that we wouldn't become what was normally called the great capital of Long Island. Many organizations that were using people that had accident addresses or get permission to use it, and we had a very little fee. $13,000 was paid by the village, and 30% of the rest, this was overtime generally for police and for DPDW. My feeling is that on April 2nd, 2019, when we passed the resolution, that it became effective at that time and should not have been retroactive, despite any dialogue that may or may not have taken place. Now, just to be forthcoming, and so that there's transparency, it's my understanding that six requests did come in before that day. If the six were to be approved tonight, it would be a total expense of about $90,000. That money would come out of the contingency fund and would not impact taxes, obviously from April 2nd on, probably next year, perhaps years later, then the fee would be a new system, which will be discussed later when we come up with a decision. But I just don't think it was intended to be retroactive, and that's my position, obviously, to drive.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment?
Have you calculated what the difference is to you guys, first one is new?
I'm sorry?
The amount that you paid last year, all things being equal, last year, what's the change, what's the delta?
Change, the raise is about 20%.
Well, the dollar amount, the delta between what you paid last year and what it would be under the.
Well, the difference would be an extra, like, $30,000, something like that. It's like triple the amount of the verb. Went from, so be like, again, it would be like almost, I guess, 300% raised on what last year's cost of the permit to this year. So you see the difference?
But you see that that's a, that's a third of what the overage would be on this policy. And that basically displays the point, and that, now you're asking us to pay $30,000, that's what we've been, $43,000, right, $43,000 towards the event. That's, that's a, that's a short, that's a, that's a very high, that's a big, that's a lot of money.
No, and I understand, and I understand your fiscal responsibility towards the village residents. You know, we all understand that. All we're asking is, being that we already were planning for this, we don't have enough time to even attempt to raise the funds to cover the permit fee. All we're asking is, as a courtesy, as a conscious decision, to allow us to have the last year's permit fee to continue, so at least it allows us some time to find other ways and other means to try to fund the permit. Listen, we understand completely your fiscal responsibility. Listen, we all business majors here at one point in time, you know, and we understand your responsibility towards the village. We're not disputing that. All we're asking for is a courtesy, being that, especially it's such a short notice. We submitted a permit sometime in late February, something along those lines, and on April 2nd, it was determined that, okay, we're going to raise it, we're going to triple your permit fee. I think as any type of business that receives an amount, such a raise or on the raise, you know, it took us, it took us back. We're not, we're not prepared for it, and we want to continue being here. We want to work with the village, you know, his administration and the past administrations have always worked with us. We want to continue doing it, but at the rates that they're being quoted at this time, it may not even happen. You know, and it's unfortunate to lose such an event that provides social and economic You know, and, and it's unfortunate to lose such an event that provides social and economic benefits. Like I said, we're a big melting pot. We all grew up here, we're all part of the community, and this brings everyone together. And we want to continue doing it. So like I said, we're hoping that you see it our way. Next year, okay, we gotta use notice. We'll deal with it the best way we can.
Mike, but now, you mentioned the past administration. Even the past administration realized that we had to change the rates because it was becoming a burden on the village and its residents for us to have these events. Again, so this is nothing new.
I, it might, you know, maybe that this situation was visited in the past, but we're addressing the ones in front, which right now is current. And that's the one that I, that we need to address. And again, we're hoping.
Yeah, I'm just going about, you, you mentioned past administration, so I'm just agreeing with you.
No, Mr. Hobs, of course, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Angel, and I want to welcome the consul that's visiting for us tonight. Okay, let's go to, uh.
Wait, I have, I submit.
Yes, and I'm going to you right now.
Thank you.
Mike, hello, um, trustees and mayor and deputy mayor and everybody else. Um, my main question was the same as Rins was about that deputy, um, village administrator. And I know that Mayor Ryan, you said that the chief of staff position sort of takes over that, over the, um, activities or, or responsibilities in that position. But usually village administrators do more than just staff. So I, I, I'm kind of confused because without knowing what the two descriptions are, I don't know what it does for us as a village to abolish a position. So that's my concern about that. And I did not write this down, but I, but it is about the same now that was just discussed. Um, my, I remember that at the March meeting, one of the groups, their application for a permit or event was pulled from the, from the agenda. I don't know if it was that particular, um, event that, that the gentleman was just talking about, but one of them was pulled. And my only comment is, if it's, if it's the thing for the event that occurs.
And thank you.
Okay, if it's the event that occurs right across Washington Street, uh, which is where I live.
Yes.
Um, I s- I'm sort of gonna make just my own personal observation and I guess an objection. I don't really think it is a melting pot event because it is primarily for one demographic group of the, of the village, which I have no problem with, but it is not a demographic, it is not a, an event that I believe everyone in the village is involved in. I think it's primarily for Latino groups, and I have nothing wrong with that, but I really resent hearing it being called a melting pot because it really isn't. And that's my only comment about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley Braisler? You're asking, I just wanted to stop it tonight, I just for you time to do that. And, uh, Ms. She's going to be to look at you to walk us through the process of prior.
Good evening. I, I, um, I was here for the C D A meeting and I think it's a great opportunity for this community to keep our property in the community. Um, but I was hoping that you'd be able to walk the community through the process of C D A purchasing tax leads because we may not all understand that, you know. And when you purchase a tax lead. It was, it's on you.
It was pulled at the C D A meeting and it would be open to sign.
Okay, so is that, that was my question.
Right. So when we, so when we, when we, when we give that information, we'll have more concrete information and direction.
Okay, well, I, I think it's a great idea. I think that it's something that our community needs and it brings hope to the community. If we can start looking at fixing our own problems. Um, and so I was hoping that you'd be able to give people some hope. Uh, we do have some very serious problems with housing in our communities. And so, um, I think you're on good track. My other question is for later, or can I ask it since I'm standing here?
You, I may ask you now.
Okay. Well, I wasn't, I wasn't expecting you to call me, so of course.
If you want to come to the line.
Oh, the boards, right? I came to the zoning board meeting the other day and I noticed that we have a new board member. What is the protocol for selecting board members for the zoning board, um, traffic and safety, C D A? Is it posted? Do you guys ask the resumes? Are we getting the most qualified people from the village to sit on these boards? What is our protocol and how are we going to encourage the people in this community to be more engaged? If you're selectively just picking people? So I, I don't recall seeing it and I do kind of check on everybody if there's an opening on a board. I'm not saying that I was going to apply for it, but what I am saying is there are people in this community that do have the expertise that may be interested. And how do we get people engaged if we don't post opportunities? Um, and so I'm, I'm just really curious as to how board vacancies are filled and are we being fair to the community of the one-one-five-five-oh? When you just randomly select someone without giving people an opportunity to let you know that they may or may not be interested?
Yeah, all those positions are mayoral appointments, not board appointments, or mayoral.
They're my appointments and not randomly, I'm picked down by people who would be able to fit the description needed. We do it April one of every year. I have a huge amount of people who have applied, have their resumes, and we try to pick the right person for that position. We go up on the board members, recommendations as well, particularly when it comes to the chairperson. And we get those types of information and we can just best select the individual who we don't have to mention by name.
No, I don't want to.
Yeah, I do, it is an excellent individual with background that would lend to the zoning board.
And, and I'm not asking to suggest that the person is not qualified.
Right.
What I am asking is that you make a broader reach to the community. There are people in the community that may be interested if it was posted somewhere, if someone saw it. But just the people like myself who come to the meetings, so I'm gonna be asked because you see me, is not fair to the people who pay this outrageous tax bill to live in this community. And so I think that we need to be more inclusive in our approach when we are filling these, these, um, opportunities. And we really need to make better, um, we need to make ourselves more available to all the people that live here so that we can get more people involved and engaged in what's going on. We wonder why nobody comes out, but we're not really embracing as a community. So I, I just wanted to bring that to your attention because I don't recall seeing it, and y'all know I look. And I don't recall seeing it anywhere.
One of our challenges this year was to either stagger the birthdays so that people maybe have replaced one at a time over a period of five years. Somehow, carelessly, many of them all have the same ending date. So now it's better, less people get out of here, but it's better it's all open, a little more balanced and continuity, I think, that we would encourage. If then.
I agree, but can we just not disappoint friends and that kind of thing? Can we just be a little more?
I don't take any exception to that. We are pointing people that are qualified to sit on the board's lawn.
I'm not saying they're not, but there could be other people who didn't know about it that are qualified.
Okay, the other individuals who turn in questions would be available to talk at open mic at the end of the period in all fashion. Would you send your words?
I have a recommendation of Patricia Perez, Villain Clerk. The board trustees hear my ways, a reading of the minutes of the regular meeting and a special meeting of way pro sixteen thousand and a half, and accept them as review. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobs?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Now we're moving on to the presentation of activities reports. We're starting with the recreation and powers commission. Human relations?
We have a written report from Juanita Harwood, Director of Human Relations Council. Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand nineteen, attended the Tyree Curry five K race planning meeting at Kennedy Park. Monday, April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, participated in a community building exercise with the Salvation Army. They walked along Terrace Avenue and the surrounding blocks to ascertain the needs of the residents who are being met. Thursday, April eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, attended a monthly meeting with members of the H R C. In attendance were Terry Banks, Ruby Sack, Dorothy Porter, Burnett Willett, Marilyn Valenho, Rosalind Seale, Kristen Reynolds, and Gladys Rapides. Monday, April twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, attended the Memorial Day Parade Planning Meeting at American Post Three-Ninety. On May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, Village Hempstead will host its older Americans' month, older Americans' month program. The theme for the program is connect, create, and contribute. At this program, we recognize the seniors in the village for their wisdom, strength, and contributions to the village. In addition, the Village of Hempstead will be hosting the one-hundred-and-thirty-fourth Memorial Day Parade on Sunday, March, May twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. There is a brief ceremony and a civil war argument at twelve-thirty, and then the lineup of the parade begins at two o'clock P M. The parade kicks off promptly at two-thirty P M. The annual Tyree Curry five K race, Health Fair, Hempstead Community Day is truly two thousand nineteen. The race begins at nine A M. Health Fair Community Day will begin at eleven A M. and conclude at two P M. Thank you.
Personal wireless board?
Good evening. Mayor Ryan, Mr. Hobs, Mr. Daniels, Dusty, other than Mr. Hobs. This is the status report for the personal wireless. Um, subject is, uh, you're approving, I'm reviewing to approve the tier-two modification for the Elm Street, Elm Avenue water tank. Uh, I'm waiting for the F C C report to be submitted from Srent at the existing property. It's known as an existing base station. The equipment on the, uh, tank is assigned and system compound, um, on ground. The personal wireless board meeting is not required for this upgrading. The existing antennas and equipment within the compound with other related equipment. A review fee of three thousand dollars was submitted and I reported it. This will go to the building department and it will be approved accordingly to the building permits. And anything that's required will be at that time submitted. I'm working with the F C C sixty-four oh-nine federal code. So I have a time limit and I'm waiting for their F C C report. And once that's done, then I can get that out and the time clock stops right there until I get that report. Thank you.
Hempstead library board? Traffic safety board?
Here's a written report from Lieutenant Kerachinko and Chairperson Mary Burns. He's in the meeting minutes of April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. The following board members were present in the Hempstead Village Board Conference Room at six-thirty P M. William Folks, Esther Gilbert, Barbara Gant Johnson, and Lieutenant Mark Kerachinko. The meeting was called to order with a salute to the flag at six-thirty-five P M. There was one item on the agenda as far as. There is a request to modify the existing no parking loading zone regulation that is opposite sixty-seven Newman's Court for a span of approximately seventy feet. The request is to alter the signs to indicate no parking or towaway zone. The business at sixty-seven Newman's Court is unable to accept delivery for the vehicles parked in that zone. At six-thirty-six P M., present at the meeting was Mr. Jeff Fines from Sedal Industries, located at one-seventy-sixth Street and sixty-seven Newman's Court. Mr. Fines was at the meeting to clarify the request. After the hearing, after hearing the request, item one was ruled upon. There was a motion by William Folks and there was a second by Barbara Gant Johnson. The request passed unanimously, could have changed. At six-thirty-five P M., present was Mr. Arlington Cloudin of forty-three Wellington Street. Mr. Cloudin is requesting to have trucks and commercial vehicles excluded from being allowed to travel and park on Wellington Street from Lockyette Avenue to Clinton Street. His request is to ban local delivery as well for these types of, as well. Lieutenant Kerachinko advised Mr. Cloudin that the New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law, section sixteen forty, subsection five, states of the village may exclude trucks and commercial vehicles, tractors, tractor-trailer combinations, and semi-trailer combinations on highways specified by such legislative body. Such exclusion shall not be construed to prevent the delivery or the pickup of merchandise or other property along the highways for which such vehicles and combinations are otherwise excluded. The meeting was adjourned at six-thirty P M. Respectfully submitted, Lieutenant Mark Kerachinko, commanding officer of the Traffic Safety Bureau.
Question? Uh, so, don't we have to vote on those signs?
If they make the recommendation, yes, and I think there is a recommendation, correct?
There's one on this side.
Yeah.
Right, this is the, the, when the code sets up.
Right.
So they're making a recommendation and then you vote.
Then you vote, okay.
Hempstead Civic Associations?
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. The Hempstead Coalition Council will be hosting, uh, candidates running for the Hempstead School Board and the Uniondale School Board breakfast on May eighteenth from nine A M. to twelve. Uh, donation would be twenty-five dollars per person. You'll come and hear the, the candidates that's running for the Hempstead School Board and the Uniondale School Board. Uh, who is likely to want to be, uh, thank you.
Which state was it?
Uh, it's gonna be at the, the dining, so, um.
What's in it?
One seventy-five, full dining.
Youth council? Zoning board?
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. We had one continued case from, uh, the previous month, which was adjourned to July eleventh. We had four new cases, two of which were adjourned also to July eleventh, one which was dismissed and one which was approved. There is one environmental impact which is set for June sixth. And, uh, we'll see if they show up on June sixth or if they ask for an adjournment or a continuation. Any questions, gentlemen? Thank you.
Can you, can you submit that so that?
Uh, this was my notes that I wrote down. I, I can, I can absolutely, I can drive them forward. Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Name board?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The planning board met on April twenty-second at six-thirty P M. Present, Rashid Walker, Leroy Brown, Len Wadeens, Marcia Turner, and Camita Pettis. Also present, Sharice Vanderhall, Council, and Michelle Banks of the planning board. Acceptance of the minutes was moved by Camita Pettis that the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, be dispensed with and be accepted as review, seconded by Len Wadeens, all were in favor. The following cases were approved. Case number seven forty-five, site plan approval for Greater New York Corp. seven-day eventist church to be demolished and construct a new church on the same premises at two-sixty-five Belmont Parkway at Greenwich Street. Case number seven seventy-three, thirty-three Main Street for site plan approval for United Cargo Express. There was no further business and a motion was made by Camita Pettis to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Leroy Brown, all were in favor. The next planning board meeting will be on Monday, May twentieth, at six-thirty P M.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hempstead Housing Authority? C D A?
Good evening, your honor, trustees.
Good evening.
Uh, I'll start off with the, I'll go over the projects that we've been working over the last month, starting with Esprit, the Empire State Poverty Reduction Initiative. On April third, fire displaced five rental tenants with eighteen residents at one homeowner household with nine adult residents and three minor children. The C D A coordinated with D S S, local hotel providers, uh, and, uh, the village officials, United Way. And we were able to coordinate emergency housing, expedite D S S payments, distribute gift cards and other donations, as well as provide limited metro car sales clients.
distribute gift cards, and other donations, as well as provide limited MetroCard to clients requesting housing and additional services. A total of five thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-three cents of Esprit emergency funds were expended to assist the families. Our community empowerment resource fair was held at Kennedy Park on Thursday, April fourth, and was very well attended by residents, agency providers, and village officials. We estimate that approximately four hundred individual community visitors and more than four, forty agencies, including some that showed up that day, participated. Many, many attendees confirmed that they received notification of the event via the postcard mailed directly to their homes. Musical and dance performances by Hempstead youth were key in bringing adult family members to the community fair and raising awareness regarding ser, services and partner agency activities. Since that event, the traffic to the community empowerment resource, uh, center has more than doubled. Additionally, the New York State Office of Temporary Disability Assistance, the, where the Esprit funded, um, funding flows from, conducted a site visit with representatives of United Way on Tuesday, April fifteenth. We received overwhelmingly positive feedback from the site visit. The governor has announced another allocation of funding to support Esprit projects throughout the state, and we await confirmation on how much will be awarded to Village Hempstead Esprit projects. The Local Initiative Support Coalition, we received an allocation of fifteen thousand dollars in funding. We have, um, received the, the first disbursement of thirty-two thousand five hundred. We provided a sun, a summary report, a narrative to the grant funders, and we were approved for a second disbursement of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Funding should be wired to it with the village within the next week. Funding will be used to, uh, for foreclosure intervention, neighborhood stabilization, and homeowner education programs. Additionally, a dedicated housing inspector slash code enforcement officer has been engaged to ma, manage the village's inventory of zombie homes. We are still awaiting announcements on the request for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of additional funding through the second round of funding made available through the local initiative support coalition. Our zombie home initiative. Since April, we've had the dedicated housing inspector code enforcement officer on-site, uh, managing and inventorying inspections on a twenty-eight day cycle. It is my understanding that all properties that remain abandoned and vacant have been properly tagged, and that those properties that now have active building permits have been updated and removed from the zombie home system. Our zombie homes task force has created two prioritized target lists with up to twenty homes on each list. Number one, properties that may be acquired and repurposed as affordable housing. Note that there would be no impact on the residential property tax base, only on the amount of the cost for the new homeowners. And secondly, properties that present a health and safety hazard. Several of these properties have been fire damaged and will be targeted for demolition utilizing community development block grant funding provided through the C D A. The C D A is working with the tax department to identify property on the zombie homes target list that also had liens up for sale. The C D A is exploring acquiring these liens in furtherance of spotlight, spotlight removal, revitalization, and neighborhood civilization efforts. C D A properties. The C D A has procured the services, services of five D Architecture and Engineering to develop a site plan for the development of thirty-eighth Thorn Avenue. Five D has also been tasked with the development of a model for three-over-three-bedroom duplexes subject to planning and zoning board approvals. Uh, five, five D will also develop the site plan for the C D A-owned landed properties. Hempstead Community Land Trust. The next general meeting of the Hempstead Community Land Trust will be held next Tuesday, May fourteenth, at Kennedy Park, beginning at six-thirty P M. At five-thirty will be the board of directors meetings, and at six-thirty will be the general meeting. All are open to the public. Safe for us to school. This is also grant-funded program for three of our elementary schools. The David A Patterson School, as you know, we completed construction on that last summer. The educational component is being implemented in two phases. First, with a trip to Brook, Brookhaven Safety Town, third grade students is scheduled for this June and will be funded through the C, by the C D A through this grant. In the fall of two thousand nineteen, additional age-appropriate safety educational programs will be offered throughout the school. Jackson Main Elementary, the design phase has been completed, and this project is scheduled to go to bid within the next few weeks. The project is on track to get into construction in the summer of two thousand nineteen. Design approvals for A D G S Middle School is subject to clearances from Nassau County, and Nassau County will be providing funded, funding for electronic speed feedback signs for every school throughout the district, including private schools. And the academies. I should say charter schools. Main Street Beautification Project. The Main Street project is in its final phases. The water feature tree plantings benches, bike racks, trash receptacle, and trash receptacles are scheduled to be installed this month. All work is scheduled to be completed by June of two thousand nineteen. The, the C D A offers, offers a one-hour, free one-hour overview of federal, state, and local fair housing laws, available to village staff, trustees, directors, and board members. This training is an annual requirement for any agency dealing with housing-related issues, and I am a certified specialist in HUD regulations, qualified as a HUD trainer. If, if you'd like any more information, please contact the C D A directly. I have three additional items that are not included on the written report. We also participated in Arbor Day on April twenty-seventh. The C D A supplied a grant of five thousand dollars to the local teachers union in support of purchasing four hundred and fifty trees that were planted throughout all the school campuses and parks throughout the village, and this funding also provided, was enabled the funding cycles and, uh, funding availability. And finally, I wanted to share with the trustees that the C D A has now, uh, made its offices available on a limited capacity on Saturday mornings to, uh, assist in the tutoring of homeless high school students, uh, for May and June of this year. And the C D A board aborted to approve a supplemental funding to compensate, uh, the executive assistant to have these offices open, and this funding would be paid through our Esprit funds. That's all I have for this evening. We're making the offices available to be opened on Saturday afternoon for three hours to provide tutorial services for homeless students. Um, it was an arrangement made, uh, at the request of Mayor Ryan, and so our staff member, our executive assistant, is coming to open the offices, and we are, we have approved her to be compensated for those three hours every Saturday in May and June through Esprit fundings, Esprit funding that is made available.
You mentioned high school students, not just high school students, correct?
My understanding, well, I don't know what other students will be coming, but the students that have come so far are high school age students. It may be other students, but I, I'm not privy to that information at this time. Whatever the arrangement is.
This is Parker for you? This is Parker?
Sarian Parker? Oh, no. She, we have, there is an agreement. She has, they've already been, um, there this past Saturday.
And those are high school students?
Those two were high school students. And only two of the four showed up the initial time, but I understand more will be coming next Saturday.
And they remember you from that room.
But they all mentioned students.
Well, that's good. Whatever the need is, we're glad to be able to, uh, have offices available.
First question, is there any news on that old one-one building on Main Street?
So, I would like to defer to legal counsel on that. I know there's been ongoing conversations about what strategies this, the village might have to be able to address some of the concerns that have arisen related to that, but I would not want to speak out of turn, and I would defer to legal counsel as to specifics.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there a formal zombie home task force, like meetings?
Absolutely. It meets every third Thursday at eleven A M., most often at the library. And there are representatives from all of the agencies, fire department, police department, building department, the D P W, C D A, office of the mayor. So there, the tax department, the legal department, all have representatives on the task force. Thank you.
Thank you. Electrical Board?
Good evening, Mayor, deputy mayor, trustees, and those residents. I'm here to give the, um, report of the electrical licensing board for the, uh, April, uh, twenty-fifth meeting. Regular meeting was called to order at four fifteen P M. at the, uh, Building Department on Jackson. Uh, members present were Mr. Constantine, Electoral Inspector, Mr. Kengemmy. Uh, I was absent, uh, Mr. Basila was absent, Mr. Dimitri was absent. So many were absent because it was the, uh, spring break, and most of us were traveling. So that's, that's what happened there. Um, acceptance at a meeting, uh, the minutes at a meeting of the March meeting of two thousand nineteen were approved as read and accepted by the two members present, president. Applications to take, uh, to take the exam. The following applicant was approved to take part one of the electrical licensing exam, Mr. James Mangan from Brookhaven, New York. All his paperwork was found to be in order, he had all his credentials. Applicant exam given, um, was corrected with recommendations. The following applicant passed part two of the licensing exam and was eligible to take his oral exit exam in, um, this coming month. Uh, Mr. Brian Flanagan of Huntington, New York. The fou, following applicant failed part one of the license exam, Mr. James Owens of Hicksville, New York. He, uh, has to wait his, uh, waiting period and then come back and take it again, file for an, uh, exam. Uh, discussions took place on Article one-ten-twenty-five, uh, excuse me, twenty-six of the National Electrical Code, dedicated equipment space, uh, electrical requirements for switchboards, panels, and motor control centers. Also what discussed was Article four oh-six point four D of the National Electrical Code, replacement receptacle requirements. Uh, with no further business to, uh, come before the board, uh, the meeting was adjourned at six P M. Respectfully submitted, Ron Gary Chan. I, I'm gonna give the second period copy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too. Lumen Board?
Good afternoon, Mayor Ryan, trustees. Good evening, residents. Uh, a regular meeting of the Examining Board of Plumbers was called to order at four fifteen P M. April twenty-third. Uh, we had several new applicants to become tri-town plumbers. Applicant number one was Robert Land from Island Park. Applicant number two was Bruce Halbert from Levittown. Applicant number three was Peter Florensky of East Norwich, and applicant number four was, uh, Richard Grisola Junior of Lindbrook. Uh, after reviewing all their paperwork, these plumbers met all the right, we, met all, with all the re, uh, requirements in the tri-town agreement, therefore were accepted. There was another applicant, Fred Schultz, uh, which did not meet the, uh, tri-town requirements and was not accepted as a village plumber. Uh, there'd be no further business at this time. The meeting was adjourned at approximately five forty-five P M.
Uh, excuse me, if you could, if you could.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, did you have, did you have someone come over to see you from Hempstead?
No. To take any tests, or student?
Requirements, what are the requirements of?
I, I.
The requirements?
You wanna copy?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll have to bring them with me. I did, I, I can definitely bring them, uh, I think when somebody came to the building department looking to, uh, to meet with the requirement.
Can I get that tomorrow?
Yeah, I could drop it off tomorrow, absolutely. Not a problem. Bring it to your office, ma'am?
Yeah, be mine.
Yep. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's see, Sarian?
Good evening. Um, in a general way, I continue to field requests such as one from the parks, from the, um, out in Belmont Park, the State Parks Department, asking for various bits of information, um, and from other individuals who are seeking things like a daughter of the American Revolution application, which, um, for which I went over to Greenfield Cemetery and got a photograph of a certain grave with grave marker, that kind of thing I do ongoingly. Right now, I have also written several articles for the Hempstead Beacon, um, for which I'm using the historian knowledge and which I, um, am going to archive because articles like that become important in just, um, maintaining a running record of the village history. Right now, my big project is I'm, I'm finally digging in hard into revising the Wikipedia article on Hempstead, which, um, is not, I don't know who wrote it before. Uh, Mayor Ryan asked me to update that about two months ago, I think, and now is, is the time when I'm going to spend time with it because it is not very well done, and its sources are suspect, so I'm going to replace it and, um, replace it with the correct sources. That's probably as much as a fifty-hour project for you to do it really well. And so that's what I've been doing. I'm also going to act as docent for two secondary classes that are going to come and visit the community room of the library in order to view the historic photos down there. So I'm gonna develop some material handouts again. I'm gonna do that on May seventeenth and May twenty-fourth. Thank you.
I would like to firstly thank you for the article you wrote for Beacon on Joe Barker. Those of you hanging in the building tonight, you just paused your way out of this collage , how we do this did on Joe Barker, is Hempstead High School graduate, class nineteen sixty-one, who was four sport female, and was voted the school as the athlete in the century. We lost him recently, appreciate the honor.
It was a pleasure to write, thank you.
I'm sorry, who did you say you were taking a picture of, pictures of in the century?
Uh, it's her name, the Charlotte, well, she.
Not a herb, uh, not a herb.
Yeah, she got right up there. No, I had a photograph of gravestone that doesn't have the date of her death on it, and that's what they needed to confirm from a non-biased, um, source for this application for this person, and I guess a gravestone is pretty unbiased.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chamber of Commerce? Mayor Ryan and Delia, Mayor Renfro, who's missing an his license-in-ferment application Esprit here.
She, she said number four?
So, number five. Result that upper recommendation on Larry Lux, purchasing agent, and Mike Taylor, superintendent of the water plan, that bid number one, H E M V, plus in nineteen twenty-twenty, ten thousand pounds of groundwater solely has some methylphosphate, and fifty pounds back to separate deliveries when needed, and the incorporate Village of Hempstead, you were to the lowest littering point chemical, thirty-fifties a rod, or the Pennsylvania, one-nine-zero-two-one, in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Trustee Johnson?
I have a question. Uh, we have a motion, ten seconds?
Yes, I can do that.
Is this a yearly amount of, uh, chemicals that's needed? Or is it a special reason?
Nineteen?
It's a year, right? How far would you be behind them?
Yeah, sure, about five-sixty, so the water, uh, that is the, uh, exact amount that we add into the waters every year. The three chemicals that you're bidding on, sealed bid, that's what we have to maintain the safety for the water, and that sodium hexamethophosphate is an iron sequestration agent. It is common, we would do all water industry, every year, same three chemicals.
It's a fancy word, but I think what it comes down to is an anti-aggressive. And the other one is fluorine, which the community was performing, which creates this less of hell back here.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hopps?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Result that upper recommendation on Larry Lux, purchasing agent, and Mike Taylor, superintendent of the water plan, that bid number two, H E M V, two thousand nineteen twenty-twenty, forty pounds, forty, uh, thousand dollars liquid housing soda, fifty percent may bring grade in the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, be aware to the lowest littering univer, univer, two hundred D C replaced, Morrisville, Pennsylvania, one-nine-zero-six-seven in the amount of ninety thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hopps?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Result that upper recommendation on Larry Lux, purchasing agent, and Mike Taylor, superintendent of the water plan, that bid number
Result that upper recommendation on Larry Lux, purchasing agent, and Mike Taylor, superintendent of the water plan, that bid number three in HMB, 2019-2020, 40,000 dollars soda, chloride, 50% liquid ditch, in the appropriate village of Hempstead, be aware to the lowest litter in county soon, home maintenance supply company, 797 Compton Street, Harvey Villar, 1175, the amount of $50,000.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hopps?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
So moving on to item number nine. Well, nine is, I'm sorry, number 11.
That's our 10th one.
Yes. So move item 11. Whereas the village of Hempstead applied and received the St. Rowan's School grant for Jackson Maine School in 2010, whereas the village of Hempstead CDA has been administrated the grant, whereas CDA Working Board of Consultants has received final disann approval for the project, whereas the village will need to fund the capital project, St. Rowan's School, Jackson Maine School, which is funded by a reversible grant from the New York State Department of Transportation, whereas the grant has $347,292.25. Now therefore, the result that the village board trust is hereby authorized as a transfer of $347,392.25 to the capital project to fund this project, which will be reimbursed by the New York State Department of Transportation. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hopps?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Whereas the village determined that the VSS for grades, public assemblies, and or mortgage shall be equal to 70% of the estimated expense by resolution on April 2, 2019. Now therefore, the village has determined that any applications for grades, public assemblies, and or mortgage to be held in 2018 submitted to the village clerk prior to April 2, 2019, will be subject to the village previous policy.
I would say move. Question. I believe that in that meeting, it was originally 70%, but we said 80%.
The resolution, right?
It should say 80.
Is it 80?
Yes.
I have a copy of it here, it is 80%.
Okay, so we amended to 80%.
And one more question. We vote yes for this, that's voting for the 80%, correct?
No. You vote yes for this, you're voting for the six applications that came in prior to April 2nd, for them to be processed under the old rule, first 13,000 on the village, and then 30% of the balance on the applicant.
After the first 13,000?
Correct.
So this new rule was prospective, is not?
We're asking for that now.
They're asking.
We're asking whether we're going to make this new rule retroactive, or whether it is going to affect April 2, 2019. There were six applications that came in prior to, so you know.
And the clerks received the applications, right?
We had them.
Okay, and I just want to be clear, again with the clerks, were they told that they were going to charge the old price?
We told them by the time they were submitting the application that the applications were whole because mayor and board trustees, they were revising the formula. We didn't even know what percentage was at the time. So it was not processing applications until further notice.
I think the good point, right, and so says the fact that it was very difficult for any parade in short period of time to raise new money is necessary. And I would still advocate that this April 2, 2019, 5,000 votes to be on that date going forward and not retroactive.
And I understand, I just want to clarify because if they were informed or not, because you know, sometimes there's a clippity of the board to say one thing and then vote something different.
Want me to read it again?
Yes, over.
Whereas the village has determined that the VSS for grades, public assemblies, and or mortgage shall be equal to 80% of the estimated expense by resolution on April 2, 2019. Now therefore, the village has determined that any applications for grades, public assemblies, and or mortgages to be held in 2019 submitted to the village clerk prior to April 2, 2019 will be subject to the village previous policy.
I'll pause on the vote if you don't mind, Mr. Renfro, be right back. We're going to raise the vote on item 12 because there's a document issued in previous meeting that we're having conflict with, and we're going to check, see if we get it right. And we'll go ahead to the next item and go back to that.
Yes, so we're moving on to item 13 while she gets an outreach. Result that upper recommendation of which we should press, that the board trustees hereby authorizes health research, New York State Department of Health, to conduct the health outreach every Thursday from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM on the Dell Street near Long Island Railroad marking lot entrance, starting on June 6, 2019, through December 31st, 2019. Several mentions continued upon compliance with the rules and regulations of the Hempstead Police Department. No liability in connection with the holding of this event and observance of the code of the village of Hempstead as it applies to the galleries of this stuff. The filing of all proof insurance are determined by the board hearing, identification and execution of a whole heartless agreement on such terms and conditions as may be acceptable to the village attorney.
So move. Second. Question, I don't see the insurance, sir.
Call to Samantha, they're going to email it, one of these days, you see.
They don't give the permit without giving us.
Yes. We don't provide certification, yes.
So the Mrs. Condition on.
Insurance, yes.
I think we should vote as such.
Okay. It does say.
Does it say?
Yes. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hopps?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
No.
Result that upper recommendation, Elisa Barrington, Director of Human Resources, that the board trustees hereby approves the appointment of a position within the appropriate village of Hempstead, Link Wadler, 99 James of Barnaway, Hempstead, New York, new hire, EBW sanitation, laborer part-time, salary of $14.91 per hour, upon approval.
So move.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hopps?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Result that upper recommendation, Elisa Barrington, Director of Human Resources, the board trustees hereby approves the appointment of a position within the appropriate village of Hempstead, each of White, 99 James of Barnaway, Hempstead, New York, part-time to Fu Manra Police Department, neighborhood A, 3501, with a salary of $47,320, upon approval.
So move.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hopps?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Result that upper recommendation, Elisa Barrington, Director of Human Resources, the board trustees hereby approves the appointment of a position within the appropriate village of Hempstead, Christopher Dennis, 99 James Barnaway, Hempstead, New York, new hire, EBW parts, laborer part-time, $14.91 per hour, upon approval.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hopps?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Result that upper recommendation, Elisa Barrington, Director of Human Resources, the board trustees hereby approves the appointment of a position within the appropriate village of Hempstead, Jose Jackson, 99 James Barnaway, Hempstead, New York, new hire, EBW sanitation, laborer part-time, $14.91 per hour, upon approval.
So move.
Who's second? Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hopps?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
So we are going to do the addendums. Result, the upper recommendation of Churis Banderhold Village Attorney, that the board trustees would like to approve a severance agreement between the village and Dr. David B. Gates.
What do you want? Say that again, more. Move. Second. I have a question. They're both.
Okay, so everyone vote now.
No, I think we remove the motion.
Trustee Hopps and Trustee Daniels?
I withdraw the motion. Make a motion, go on to executive session. Second.
Executive session to discuss personal matters, correct? Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hopps?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Executive session. So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hopps?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes. Our attorney has a statement to make, and we can do the addendums, and then finally go back to item 12 on our agenda, which is the special event applications.
In regards to item number 14, which was discussed during the open portion session prior to the meeting, there was a misstatement made by one of the trustees. Item number 14, the resolution to abolish the position of village administrator is separate and apart from addenda number one, which is to approve a severance agreement between the village and former employee.
Thank you. So now on the denim one.
Yes. No, addendum two, right?
No, addendum.
No, denim one.
Result that upper recommendation of Churis Banderhold Village Attorney, that the board trustees would like to approve severance agreement between the village and Dr. David B. Gates.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hopps?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan? Result that upper recommendation of Assistant Chief Patrick, the board trustees would like to enter into an agreement with Island of Professional Medical Resources PC, specifically Dr. Jorge Elvartney as police surgeon for professionals medical services for the Hempstead Police Department.
So move.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hopps?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Result that upper recommendation of Lieutenant Mark Cherychenko, Traffic and Safety Board, the board trustees would like to approve the following recommendations made by Traffic and Safety Board. First, remove the no parking loading zone on the south side of Newman's Board, 115 feet east of Chastner Street. Also, remove the no parking loading zone on the south side of Newman's Board, 180 feet east of Chastner Street. Number two, install a no parking doorway zone designed with a narrow point in the east on the south side of Newman's Board, 150 feet east of Chastner Street. Please know that regulations are to effect when signs, markings, given notice are therefore posted.
Move.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hopps?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Result that upper recommendation of Churis Banderhold Village Attorney, the board trustees would like to approve public hearing, which was held on March 5, 2019, Chapter 95, Add 48, conduct the public places for the code of the appropriate village of Hempstead.
So move.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hopps?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Result that upper recommendation, Elisa Barrington, Director of Human Resources, the board trustees hereby approves the appointment of a position within the appropriate village of Hempstead, Christopher Dennis, 99 James Barnaway, Hempstead, New York, new hire, EBW sanitation, laborer part-time, $14.91 per hour, upon approval.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Hopps?
No.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Result that upper recommendation, Grace Lawrence, acting village treasurer, all million bills ordered by the board trustees on Chair Warren Day, Day 7, 2019, we approve as previous review.
So move.
The policy is that we go on April 2, which the applicant was supposed to try and cause a negative effect.
Just take a moment, thank you, Grace Lawrence, who was our acting oldest treasurer, did a great job at the end of it, appreciate it. Now we have several questions that are going to be asked in open mic. It's going to be addressed on Lucas, please.
Renfro is.
Good evening again, Mayor and trustees. My first question is, in the chief's positions, what are they doing out in the case of law? Are they doing guest jobs or? Who is taking their place? Next would be the results of the shots. How many victims have been involved in the shots? Crime in the village, also gang violence. The liquor authority, what are they doing about the bars on the east end? And we have actually a date for spring cleanup, being that they're going to do it in June.
We're going to turn to the attorney for your first question, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Regarding the chief and the deputy chiefs, they're on administrative best duty, which means that they're continuing in their administrative roles on behalf of the village. The only difference is, is that they're not signing any orders on behalf of the village and making any public appearances on behalf of the village. But their day-to-day roles remain the same because of the administrative nature of their jobs, they continue to complete those tasks.
And that's administrative modified.
Thank you, administrative modified.
The uniform badge and gun are not personal. The uniform badge in the garden are not legal.
I don't understand that, but hey, that sounds like a situation. All right. Next, the shot spotter, this is one of them.
Shot spotter, we had since the last meeting, we had 14 shot spotter alerts, five of them were near the range, and all 14 had no scenes that were able to be located. As far as crime, we did an. As far as crime, we did an analysis, our crime analyst, comparing a five-year average going back to two thousand and fourteen as compared to this period of time in two thousand and nineteen. The robberies are down fifty percent, violent crimes down twenty-two percent, and total crime is down eighteen percent.
So was you saying the last two weeks that it hasn't been no robberies or gang violence?
No, I'm saying that as compared to five years ago, it's gone down considerably.
I was trying to find out in the last two weeks for any incidents there.
I could go pull it up on a computer if you'd like.
Yes, I would like. All right. The other is with the liquor authority, the bars station, like no, I'm dealing with that.
You know about what happened with cats, right?
Uh, I kind of forgot, I'm a old guy, I can look for everything. Can you refresh on that? Sure. Cats, there was a situation worked out between the owner and the liquor authority which had nothing to do with the problem we're sitting here. The other bar, was it again, Old, Old L D?
Old A now, before.
Yeah, it was Vegas, I think, before. What happened is there was some information that we are still gathering. I talked to an attorney a couple days ago and referenced that. At the next meeting, I think we would have something to do with it. The reason why I ask you that is because I feel that, I know you're doing a good job in that position, but I feel that more of the community should be going down there with you to express our dislike of having these college bars.
In fact, the people who are going there. Have you been to that?
With cats?
No.
Not trying to get the next one over.
Forty Road. Some of those residents really go over there next time. And you can come too, if you want.
One is about, reputation is just provided by whom?
I'm sorry?
Reputation is provided by whom?
Who wants to go?
Oh, that's the city, you can't park the city, what's it going to do now?
Where am I supposed to park?
Eighty. There are funds that cover that.
We just make this perfectly clear, we don't have any, we don't, we don't have parking money, gas money, or tow money when we go there.
I guess you don't want to ride a bull.
No, but I'll drive, I'll drive.
All right, let me know, we know how to clean it. Also, Mayor, the spring cleaning is going to be done in June, but I have no fly information. How many information will be available?
That type of information is going to go to Janice Richardson?
Yeah, Frankie said.
So we have it in the back.
Do you have the required information? Do you have an idea of when it will be available?
I think one, I think, don't send out the available. I'll go check tomorrow.
Is it, oh, is it a new way of distributing the information?
That's what we normally do, right?
No, we only sit and out, you know, stuff, you know.
Frankie just said he believes it was sent out by mail, so he can find out the date of it tomorrow.
Okay, because you guys have a receipt, you know, of who's going to do the, the, the.
Okay, I get, I get this more, I get you every year, I have one more.
Oh, okay, well, I actually haven't seen it in a year, you know, in, in this. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Stitt?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees. First, let me go on record and say, as I expressed in my letter to you upon my resignation from the village police department, how grateful I am to you and the entire board for the privilege to serve on the police department. Thank you again. I'm happy to see that the mayor and deputy mayor have taken a stand publicly in support of the deputy chief and chief of department. And I'd like to say, just on behalf of myself, that it's good to see that leadership on the village is actually taking a stand and speaking up on behalf of the residents. I wish that was done when I was going through my situation, with that time has since came and gone. And if I had to say who's the good ones, Deputy Chief Allen and Chief Paul Johnson are part of the village. Also, I would like to say, the reason that I'm here today is because I serve on the school board. And I believe I brought this issue about three years ago, and the makeup was a little bit different. I think back then, I think Trustee Hobbs was Deputy Hobbs, and I think you was the trustee. And the issue is this, Senator Peter King, he was very instrumental in bringing a grant to Long Island by way of the emergency management round within the counties, to where if he was a volunteer fireman or a working ambulance corps within Nassau Superior County, you can attend Nassau and Superior County schools free of charge. It's not like you had to give any money for anything, you reimbursed. Only thing you paid for was the forty-dollar application fee to Nassau College. Now, that grant ran about ten years, it's been done with, but Nassau County has decided to keep that program going, and Nassau County is now funding it. So, the problem I have with us here in Hempstead is that last week, New York State had a fund drive where they were actually recruiting new members. Everybody took part in this drive, I did not see Hempstead are taking that. You drive down Peninsula Boulevard, across from Hempstead Lake Park, you see a Rockville Center sign asking for volunteers. They talk about the retirement program, they talk about free tuition. You go down Hempstead Turnpike, on West Hempstead is a big sign that says, "We need volunteers." You go a little further down to Franklin Square, you'll see the same sign. You go in the opposite direction to Union Dell and East Metal, you'll see a similar sign, even in Garden City and Meniola as well. Your bylaws in the Hempstead Fire Department says that Hempstead, a student within six months of graduation can join the fire department. Now, the fire department is a good institution, they can involve, most volunteer firemen will go on to become either paid firemen, paid EMTs, or police officers. I'm a little bit concerned because here in Hempstead, we don't have people joining and becoming firemen. And as a school board member, I've spoken to my superintendent, and we're trying to make sure that our high school students have some type of pathway after high school, whether it's college, whether it's work degree. So we want to talk to you guys about getting our Hempstead High School seniors somehow above the fire department, that way they can find a way to pay for college. How can we address that?
I think your sign approach suggests that would be a good method.
I'm sorry?
Approach you said about having to sign, indicating people being able to see the advantages of our idea is a good approach. If you also put it online, and you can talk it up, and you can see, and cover more people. Fire department is low, two-hundred, as low as usual. We can agree, probably twice that, I was taught. So we do it that way.
Because the last time it was brought up, it was said that there was no room for members, for the department to accept the members. I want to say a good amount of residents from one hundred terrorists, they tried to join. And then that's when they started doing background investigations, charging residents a hundred dollars to send them there. And I just want to let you know that I am pushing this initiative because even though community college is a difference in pay for four-year colleges, but some families still have an issue with paying for college tuition. And if I piss and go for free, I think we should pursue that as well.
I wish the chief was still here, but I did excuse him. The truth matters, I believe there's a way on that. We'll double check, and we'll try to do what we can to make as possible people going about the armed violence. It's a win-win.
Thank you.
Thank you. George Shaw?
Good evening, trustee, Mayor, trustees. Couple of issues, points. First of all, I spoke to you, Mr. Mayor, and I wanted it for the record to dispel that Charlene Thompson's job is secured and won't be replaced by some pastor that's going around as rumor. And I just thought, it's, I'm just saying. It's just been out there, and I don't like those type of rumors that, you know. I, I, I mean, we finally got someone in CDA with some chief to do some things and who care enough. We do not need another woman pushed out of a job that's doing what she needs to do. And we've had enough pastors. So publicly, I don't want no backdoor anything, I'm just putting it out there. Because a while back, when Sherri Hines was pushed off the police department, but she didn't get her position, I personally spoke to Mayor Hawke. And his feeling was Chief Wing needed to have someone with him that he can trust. And we know how that worked out. And she, they had to pay her, right, for a lawsuit, did they not? Right, but prior to that, I had said to him before it ever happened, that she was next in line. And he felt he, the wing, Chief Wing needed to have, who he needed to have with him, which was all corruption. And then Chief Wing immediately left come January with a scandal. He left, so we paid a lawsuit. He didn't get who he wanted, and he still left. This is stuff that came out in the front, and I went and questioned it upfront to him. And he may declare that he let Wing pick who he wanted, which we knew was a lawsuit, and we paid. So we paid many lawsuits that was unnecessary. We need a woman in the police department cleaning out here. You need a next woman in that job. And I don't want to hear y'all spouting, you know, if anything happened with Chief Lamont, y'all need to look at pushing some women in there who stop the nonsense. Just, just saying. The Armory, you have, um... We have a tax increase point eight percent, right? We have a tax increase, that'd be point eight percent?
Zero point eight.
Yeah, point eight percent, that's, yeah. But you want to take six hundred fifty-seven thousand to do a work at the Armory?
No, a feasibility study.
Uh, to do a study, right? That's, that's our money going out for something. The Armory's been there how long? How many years that Armory been in here? Okay.
The Armory was an armory for a long time.
Right.
We got it, I think, for a dollar to engage in the trade.
Right, and why wasn't all the police put there? Why wasn't all the police, the police department put there?
There was actually a study at that time. It determined that it was not refinanced, solid. In fact, the recommendation of some of the people in the study was to knock it down in the building.
Right.
And then, and it's parked on the courthouse there as well. And that didn't happen after the study as well. Suggestion now is to have no state, because the wrong houses is the person. And it is underutilized, there is thirty police officers in the building.
So could, we, we, but, you know, I'm, I'm...
That's one of the studies with the church?
But you're, I'm going to bore all this time, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And it's sat there not being fully utilized. Now, we have a conspiracy theory going on that the village department, the police department, would be moved, right? Wasn't that a conspiracy for a couple of years, huh?
I'm not aware of that conspiracy.
Come on, it's been out there.
I'm not aware of that conspiracy.
Yeah, where you, where you at? Quite a few, it's out there. But the, the thing to note, now that y'all spending all this money on another study, that's our tax dollars, raise the taxes again, and then you want to put the police department and probably the village hall in the same building, which doesn't work, by the way. That's, that's not going to work.
And you're, you're putting the car before the horse.
Uh, but, but, this has been going on.
Some determinations, as many questions you're asking, that are invalid. We have a study, but it's an old study. So the recommendation by the board members was, let's do a new one, and see if this works.
I know, without money, you're doing new.
Obviously, you study, you force something.
Haven't, haven't said that, when y'all do the study, I, I, I would like to see some kind of results. I mean, let's not, let's not not do another study, you know.
The only thing is, I'm not sure where you got the figure for the study, I...
What you mean, it's in the paper, how much is it? How much is it? Isn't it six, thirty-seven, six, seven? Come on, Jeffrey, you're the one putting it through.
For a study?
Yes. It's not? How much is on the newspaper?
I know what the study requires, but I don't know what I'm likely referring to, but seven...
It's in the newspaper.
Six hundred and thirty thousand dollars on the study.
Okay. I'll bring you the paper, I just kept it on it. Okay, I'm certainly leaving, I got it on my tab.
Oh, I appreciate that.
Okay, so, that is in the paper, bye.
I can point out the previous ones that's passed.
Okay, well, I want to, once y'all finish your study, to do something, but you can't put village hall in the police department same building. That's, that's not a good, um, point.
Mr. Mayor, ma'am, by the way, in regards to, no, that was Ethan. In regards to the CDA director, I can't speak for anyone else, but I fully support her in the job she's doing. I think great things are going to happen with her in leadership.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I appreciate, that's what we need to hear, that it's just a rumor. I, I, you know, I come to the horse, right? I don't keep going with rumors pass on and pass on, I actually, I actually, that's it. So someone has answered, one has answered.
No, I would concur, and I, I, I find the rumors, that's what I should, I don't have to give much credit.
I, I do, I do, especially when you got to Sherri Hines, like he paid, and we paid a lawsuit.
I, I think it's too different, I just...
It is, it is, but...
She didn't prevail in the suit.
Naturally, it was right.
Whatever you want to say, we agree.
That's our tax dollars, so you can understand how I feel, right?
Well.
Our tax dollars, that was wasted. Okay, but, um...
Thank you.
Who, no, no, who was responsible for, yeah, I know, who's responsible for the old outdated laws? I went to a meeting and we were told by the trustees that the zoning laws were outdated, possibly. And we paid some lawyer sitting here for a second job that she's had, and she did a job for one hundred sixty-seven, had a second job, and she was updating all the laws. So, did the laws get updated? Did you look at all the laws? And I'm asking that the trustees look into their departments and ensure that their laws are updated, because I guess it's overwhelming if it's a lot out there.
Myself and, uh, Trustee Hobbs has left Nitecon, so we are very impressed with new laws and new regulations. We're doing our best.
Well, lady...
To get a better understanding of village government.
A lady cried about ten raccoons in a, in a zombie house, and she was told that, you know, they can't enter the house, and I'm not understanding that.
That's on Bennet, correct?
Right, and she had ten raccoons, that should have been a done deal.
The deputy mayor went by there, and I believe that Antonio Kelly take, take the...
Right, but she was so frustrated speaking at one of the civic meetings, nothing got done. She called the building, she called this, nothing, she wanted to call News Twelve. And when the two trustees were there, they did take it back, at least, and, you know, but they had to push it, why do people have to complain so much?
George, I'm going to pay this to the rest of the residents.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, how are you?
All right.
Board, it's so good to see you again, it's been a long time. Sorry I had to sit down, I'm still sitting down at the loss of my mother.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, and we are trying our best to move forward. The Nassau County Police Department, this Thursday at eleven, Nassau County Police Department, this Thursday at eleven. So thank you for your condolences, I'm here for myself and my family. For everyone present here tonight, I was at the town Hempstead meeting today. And after I finished explaining to them what had happened to me, they asked, I was asked by one of the board members to come to this meeting here. I'm one that I believe that we do not have enough communication, and therefore, I am sharing my information because it may help someone else. My problem was resolved. Let me explain. This is concerning the Department of Housing Authority and Assistant Living through section eight. I am a recipient of that grant with my thirty to fifty thousand dollar job, okay? I want you to know, I don't mind telling you how much I earn, because I work like everyone else. And if they give me an increase, I'll take it. But as you know, eleven ninety-nine had a president that had two books, and our money was stolen for ten years, so even though I should be at forty dollars an hour, we are earning considerably less. The, the money was never recalled, and as a result, we are, we have a lower income. And as a result, we are, we have a lower income to move forward. Um, the discussion that I want to share with you tonight and get some feedback from you is regarding, uh, an advocate for a recipient such as myself for housing. Uh, what, what we need for the recertification process is an advocate to come in and sit down with us when we sit before the HUD representatives. Point to be stated, the recipient that, the, the representative that I sat in front of, I forwarded my information to her via the internet, made a phone call, because even my case, that's our ADP, which is internet. So everything was forwarded to her. She sanctioned my employer, then she received it, and then, um, she received not only my, my income, but also other documents that I emailed to her. And I did have copies. When I sat in the chair that day with no documents in my hand due to whatever process I was going through, having forwarded everything, she took my file in front of her, bit over the desk, looked in my eye, said, "Where are your documents?" I said, "I forwarded them. You sanctioned you had them." She said, "Oh, you're terminated." Within a week, I had a letter from HUD, from her office and her desk, stating I was terminated. My landlord requests that I give him the cash for one hundred percent of the, uh, rent that I was receiving assistance with. I was prepared to move on. I want you to know...
Yes.
The conclusion, because I know my time is moving steadily. But that's why I say, because I am a part of the working class recipient. But you have senior citizens and mothers who have no job. And we need, as a people, as a resident, someone who will sit next to us during recertification and give us our rights as a United States citizen to follow up with this, okay? Uh, I also am recommending, because it says, what is my recommendation? I don't know if that's for you or me. But I'm recommending that a, a tenant sit on the board, one that would represent my building, and perhaps someone else who might stand up and say, "Representing your building."
If we could stop at this point, you have three minutes to wrap. The Department of HUD Housing and Urban Development requires two tenants to be elected by ten residents who be serving on the board. There are two elected officials, I'm talking now, the HUD facilities at two sixty Quentin, Yale, Todd Newglad, who has two tenant representatives, as required by the law.
Uh, I'm not in one of their buildings, unfortunately.
But that's the question you asked the Department of Housing Authority. Have a tenant, there are two tenants that are represented on the board.
And then the, thank you, the follow-up, okay, would be a, uh, a tiny resolution then, with those tenants and myself. So that I will not, nor will another experience that demoralizing situation again. Thank you.
All right, Mark Edelstein, please.
Excuse me?
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor Ryan, trustees, everyone present? My name is Mark Edelstein. As the president of tenant advocate, I'm speaking on behalf of several residents that live in the same building I do. There's about seventeen issues. All of the people who are speaking, they did not want to be lengthy, so I made some footnotes in the left column of the original document I gave to Mayor Ryan. And I have a photocopy for each of the trustees. First, regard to, uh, the building manager Kathy Stevens. This is a major problem, I believe, that she's mentally ill. Ms. Stevens, on numerous occasions, seven occasions I've witnessed, and Mayor Ryan came to the People's Tenants Association of New Greenwich Gardens, made second to the people. And the audience mentioned that she, um, will, uh, start an argument with people and accuse them of, quote, rolling their eyes, after, unquote. This usually escalates to extreme racial violence. In my case, I've had eye surgery. My eyes cannot possibly rotate. I was calling Mr. Donnelly's office while she was going off in her tangent, punching the desk, and starting to escort me violently out of her office. The woman is completely out of control. She's abusing the seniors and disabled who live in that building. Next, there are cameras. And they claim that the cameras are for protection. Or the people installing the cameras have told us that these are smoke detectors. And the cameras are in front of the apartment entrances of the people who Ms. Stevens, the building manager, has been dead against. In my case, they removed the cameras just before Housing and Urban Development and/or the HUD people or the human rights came to investigate. And the ceiling tile, they were removed where the cameras were mounted. And they denied that there were cameras there. One of the people in residence here took pictures of that. They stole this camera. And, um, they stole the pictures on top of my diatribe. Third area is the, um, is the threatened, threat, threats by Kathy Stevens that if we speak to certain tenants in the building, if we come to the People's Tenants Association meetings, we can lose our leases, be removed from HUD, not be able to find a HUD supplement anywhere else. The keys to the bathrooms can be issued to any of the seniors who ask for them because the most recent remark that Kathy Stevens made is that if the people visiting use the bathrooms, they do not need. So I know of eighteen seniors who have had accidents because the guards claim they don't have the keys, they can't unlock, or they're doing other things such as signing people in. The next part is the, um, is the, um, actually, this could be taking too long. The, um...
I, you know, I took notes that I had heard of trustees one time or another in two one fifty-five Greenwich. The night I was there recently, Richard Pope, Dan, Mary Carson, that New York community chains were also present. And with all the notes, I have machine and inquiries already. And I have, I have everything you've said. And there are some things that are still written down. So I'm trying to get on top of that. And we appreciate your concerns.
I wish we could somehow get an audience with the owner of the building. Those people, they're ambiguous, who owns the building? They say that Richard Donnelly owns the building, but he's just the supervisor for various building managers.
There is issues in that regard. And you did cite, uh, your...
The last two issues, if I may be very brief, is bedbugs. And my apartment was treated the second and ninth of January, which would have been more than sixty times it's been treated. I did take a settlement to, um, just buy new furniture, a lot less than I would have gotten if I went to court. But there's a new lawsuit in my case for the last three months. Kathy Stevens lied, she lies numerous, and she's a habitual liar. So she's lied to the building inspector, saying that I'm not letting pest control in the sixteenth. And that was for cockroaches, which, thank God, I don't have. But it was the second and ninth, the apartment was treated. And, um, in the case of, um, of the pest control inspectors coming back, they were told by Kathy Stevens that they have to not be paid if they did the, the pest control again. So they said there are no bugs. And I have now gathered six letters from doctors witnessing bedbugs through...
That, that was, that was on my list. You were all very, very clear on something.
Last is the master key.
You mentioned, you mentioned the master key as well.
Well, every, every apartment had, um, received new master keys, but the people doing the rankings are still the ones holding the master keys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Edelstein, can we have your, a copy of, of that?
I apologize.
And, and we, we acknowledge that we, we've been to your building as well on numerous occasions. And we do think that there's a, there's an issue there. I think this is resolved around building management. We, we drafted a letter to Mr. Donnelly about a week ago.
Thank you.
Demanding the, the, the security deposits. Because I understand your security deposit hasn't been segregated. You guys haven't received statements about your security deposits in a very long time.
That's a good point.
The buildings they manage in Baldwin and Rockville Center, I mean, ever, had a combined lack of Hispanic population more than five percent. And, um, the building in Hempstead is managed completely differently. And I, I know people from Vidley Church.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
And just to let the tenants know, I've been, I did give you the list from the meeting the other evening. And I reached out and I looked forward to what Mr. Donnelly said, because he is Kathy's boss, Kathy Stevens' boss. And they're gonna, um, reach out, back out to us and give me three tickets to the date to meet with the mayor, along with another trustee. Okay?
Excuse me, did you really talk to Donnelly? Or you talked to his secretary?
No.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Massie, thank you. Here we are. Uh, on to the...
I'm calling you, I'm going to use a whole three minutes. My question is about that master development agreement for Main Street. At a meeting about maybe four meetings ago, maybe five, it was mentioned that, that somebody asked, um, about the status of that agreement. Because it was over five years ago. And apparently, according to this person, they, it might not be, um, it should be, um, terminated or ended by now. And I thought that it was decided at that meeting that it would be looked into and that the status follow-up would be given to the residents or the members or whoever's at the meeting. And I wanted to follow up on that.
There is issues with the master development agreement. The fact that there's been inactivity for several years is also a political issue. There's also the fact that there have been two lawsuits against them. The so-called timeout period during that interval and now is being discussed by the attorneys. But we are looking in the direction of the attorney. See, we can't come up with a, 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 a answer because it's dragging. And it's kept development, among other issues, away from what's obviously needed. And there's obviously some development on, on the North Main Street area. So it is looking to, the MDA is being looked at.
Okay. And then my, my last comment just came up. Um, about that, um, study you're going to do, another feasibility study?
Are you referring to the Armory?
Yes, I'm sorry, about the Armory. Apparently, it appears that one of the trustees provided news with that amount of money. This, with that quote of the six hundred whatever thousand. So it wasn't something being made up? Okay, thank you.
I appreciate, thank you. All right, uh, Paul Candy?
I'm from Greenwich Gardens, someone. Senior building.
I, I certainly have your opportunity at the mic. I noticed the next four speakers are all for one fifty-five Greenwich. So hopefully, we won't have any redundancy. But whatever you say is important. You have your three minutes at the mic.
Right. It's pretty the same thing as Longenstein said, you know? Uh, the only thing, telling people not to come to a tenant's meeting, run the building like a prison. We have our sickles to deal with, rudeness and disrespect. It's Kathy's agenda, it's seniors'. Uh, another thing, uh, signing a lease is supposed to be once a year. She does twice a year. Also, when we get, uh, if Social Security doesn't give us a raise, she raises our rent too. If we don't get a raise. And if we do get a raise, she raises our rent, I raise it. So, that's it.
I appreciate it. And we are happy to look into it. The other issue that hasn't been mentioned yet is the fact that after a certain hour, they won't allow business to go up to the property, the office personnel, down to business. And if there's a question of health, emergency, that just doesn't work. All right, Dallas?
Good evening, ma'am, trustees.
Thank you.
Um, I've handed in, um, some paperwork there. I've been a resident of New Greenwich Gardens before Kathy Stevens even came there. She arrived in two thousand and five. I've had multiple surgeries. And my brother's been taking care of me. At the time, I have paperwork here that she, she requested their IDs, which I provided to them. Then over here, she's telling me that my brothers are living with me. They cannot, they can't help me, they can't stay with me since twenty sixteen. I had went to forty Main Street for help. Nobody knows anything about anything. And, and it's ridiculous. And yes, it, the whole thing about coming downstairs at the twelve o'clock, she did that because of me. All right? I'm a target, I'm a bullseye. And I've been in that building, you know, for a long, long time. And right now, I'm trying to approach the court so I can get an extension, so I can find a place to move.
Right. I, I believe you said at that meeting, May thirty-one was your headline. And, uh, we're on top of that. So we're looking for an answer that's right.
Because, I mean, I've been in that building before she came there.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying? And ever since then, she's had a vendetta out against me. She's got a camera in front of my door. She watches me at one o'clock in the morning. If I go downstairs, I go outside to the store, she knows. She calls the guard. "What are you doing at home at one o'clock in the morning?" Looking at the cameras all over the building. You know what I'm saying? I had, um, our lawyer is listed truthful as well because she said there's plenty of places for me to move. And she said she'd move me to Harlem. You know how I took that? That's very racist. All right? I had to have, just to even recertify, my attorney was present. So they let me recertify. Then she sent me a letter to sign my lease. She claimed she did not send me a letter. I do have the letter that she sent. Then when I called her, she goes, "I have nothing for you to sign." You know, and I, May thirty-first is my deadline. And I'll be, and, and, you know, it shouldn't be like that because I've been there way before her. And I don't cause any trouble to nobody. And they didn't have the city pass back then. And my brother now is my homeowner. What he was doing for free, he's getting paid for now. And she still has a problem. Okay?
We should give information and share with this man.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Uh, Richard Deuce?
Mayor and trustees, I'm coming for you on Kathy Stevens' situation. Like I said before, she's, she's outrageous with the things that she do to us. She, she treats us totally. I mean, she, she's constantly messing with the rent, constantly talking to us like we're, we're nobodies. It's just not right. I mean, we, she calls people names. She talks, talks about roving eyes. I mean, she's just outrageous. It just doesn't make any sense. Somebody's going to do something about it soon because otherwise, we're going to be more targets. And she's not going to let up until something is done.
We said that. And I know the ticket reason I attended. It appears that two people on the board in the meeting could be somewhat disruptive.
Yeah. And that's what ended the meeting. But of course, we tried to keep it civil and not have a big battle there. But those people that got up and stood were on her side. Those are her pets. Those are the ones that would stand up for her. But we are the people who are dealing with the real deal and suffering the consequences behind it.
Thank you very much. Okay, Kathy, Mary?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. As public service, I prepared a study of the, uh, negative impact of the pilot tax breaks that have been played in this community, uh, for many, many years, at least twenty years, maybe more. And, um, the study that I prepared, which I came to have, um, has to do basically with only thirteen of the twenty-five pilots that exist today. Um, I chose these thirteen because they've been in effect for the last ten years. And by looking at the, uh, tax laws that, uh, has been attributed to these pilots, it's very revealing, because you can, um, extend it when you realize that this is only half of the pilots. And, um, the second page of the report lists the apartment buildings, uh, that are getting these pilots. It doesn't include all the apartment buildings, because at the time of the study, uh, three oh three Main Street and five ninety-six hundred were not part of the, uh, documentation that I was using. I will, uh, continue, uh, to analyze the other pilots as well. But for this study, which I said, uh, deals only with, uh, half of the pilot tax breaks that this community is suffering from. And if you look at the first page, you will see that within the ten years from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, that the loss to the village is fifty million dollars, just from these ten pilots. It does not include the other, uh, twelve pilots. And the tax rate as applied to the school district is usually at least twice as much as what, um, the village tax rate is. So if you have, uh, a loss of five million per year for the village, you're gonna have a loss of approximately ten million, uh, in the school district for these years. So you're looking at fifty million dollars have already been lost by these, these thirteen pilots. And, uh, a hundred million lost in the school district from these pilots. So, and I also, you know, point out that the number of units, of rental units that are in these first thirteen pilots is eighteen hundred and twenty-eight units. But now, there are twenty-three sixty units, twenty-three hundred and sixty units that are under pilot agreements. And the real, uh, you know, the third page goes into the debt that the village owns. The village owes forty-five million dollars in debt, the village is forty-two million dollars in debt. And just from these ten pilots for ten years, they wouldn't admit a debt of all this forty-five million dollars. This is really serious, and I'm hoping that this board takes note of this, because the master developer agreement, as you know, the appraisal's called for twenty-eight pilots for about fifteen other apartment buildings. This has gotta be stopped, it's killing the village, and it's, it's creating these incredible high taxes in this village, and it's hurting all the people, and it's going to lead to people being forced out. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody. On the, in motion, motion.
Uh, trustee Johnson? Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.